All right, great. Can I have the roll call, please?
Gibson, Kapler, Cochrane.
Here.
Ormsby.
Here.
Satterfield, Stoltenberg.
Here.
Wenland.
Here. All right, we had minutes from the meeting of May 15, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes.
Second. Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 15, 2024. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, same sign. Okay, the minutes are approved. We don't have anybody on line from the commission tonight, do we?
There should not be anybody online.
All right, just making sure. All right. So again, welcome to the Plan and Zone Commission for June 19, 2024. We are a recommending body appointed by the city council to review site plans, land use, and zoning changes and such. We have a few people in the audience tonight. So if you've got input on a particular case at the appropriate time, I will ask you to come to the podium to my right and to your left and give us your name. And we'd love to hear your input. And with that, we will begin.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Case 24041 is related to the self-supporting municipal improvement district boundary modification and renewal. We'll go into the details. That's a little bit different case than we usually hear tonight, so. Some background, the applicant is actually downtown business organization for the city of Bettendorf. Ryan Jancy is sitting here with me. He's the executive director of that organization. They request to expand the boundary and renew the SMID. And what that is showing you on the map in front of you is outlined in yellow, and the new areas are shown in red. The special, I'm sorry, the self-supporting municipal improvement district is a way that businesses can, in essence, tax themselves for improvements to be spent in the district that's shown on the map in front of you. State law requires a minimum of 25% of property owners representing in the area, representing at least 25% of the assessed value to be supportive of this. We actually have 52% support and over 71% of the assessed value. This is a renewal, so this has actually been in place for five years. So this is coming back to be renewed for another five-year term and to increase the boundary with those areas. These are the locations of Lord's School, if you're familiar with that, and then the Realco Company just on the east edge there. Both two new owners who voluntarily, by the way, want to come in. With that, I'll turn it over to Ryan to kind of explain the SMID to you and some of the things that are going on, just so you kind of get a little background of what it is and what it's been doing in our city. And then we'll move to vote.
Sure, thank you, Mark. Again, my name is Ryan Jancy, executive director of the downtown Bettendorf organization. Our current SMID ends here in FY '24, which is why we're looking to renew it. And I will outline that this only affects multi-res, commercial, and industrial properties within the district. And we, you know, from facade grants to interior grants, it's all the money that we raise stays within that geographical area. We do beautification efforts, the flowers out there, the flowers, I'm sorry, the flags. We have staff on hand, including, in addition to myself, I have a cleaning ambassador that will clean off our on-ramps and off-ramps, you know, trying to have our best foot forward as we look our best down here. And we work to promote the district. We had the Be Downtown event we had down here. We're looking to continue to grow, work with commercial property owners, bring more businesses down here, more walkability, make sure it's safe, well-lit, all that good stuff. In essence, I'm a mini ambassador, or a mini alderman, if you will, for these property owners. I work on a daily basis. I'm office out of a centra down here. They'll come to me with any number of issues, whether it's praise or pointing a finger at me, but my job is to work for them and make sure we're giving them satisfaction to create some economic value for them down here and make it a great place to live, work, and play in downtown Bettendorf.
Great, appreciate that effort. Yeah, thank you. I'm curious, can I just ask a question about that?
Sure.
How do you determine if somebody comes to you with a request? What are the criteria of we grant it, we don't? Who gets how much? How does that work?
So we have a facade and interior grant program, and it's similar to what the city used to do. And so we have a committee. The committee reviews it, and then we take it to our board. They're the ultimate approval on it. And we'll give up to 15,000 or half of the project, whatever is less. And we have roughly $75,000 a year that we invest into this project.
Great, yeah, nice. Yeah, Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to give a little bit more color to the information that Mark and Ryan gave, this is sort of a procedurally unusual matter. So I'll just kind of maybe go through some of those, some of the logistics of initially approving a SMID and then renewing it, which is really the same process, just so that we're all on the same page. And I think Mark and Ryan kind of hit on a lot of those. But as was stated, this is already codified in our city code. And what we're really doing here is amending the city code to have a five-year additional term and to add to the geographic scope. As was said, you know, these are properties that want to come in. One of the things that is unique about this is that there's a remonstrance part of the statute once it gets to city council. If 25% of the property owners that are subject to the SMID indicate that they do not want to be part of it, they can, if we get 25% of those against it, then it would require a unanimous vote of council, once it gets to council. Without that, it still needs a three-fourths of council to approve it. So it just is, I mean, it's sort of indicative of the, you know, the tax that is being imposed voluntarily, but it is sort of an unusual situation. And if there, and it doesn't seem almost possible, given the amount of support that's already been demonstrated, but there is also a 40% threshold that would require the application to be withdrawn. That's once it gets to the city council. I just want to make all of that clear. And then the one other unique aspect of this is that the statute does require a finding from the Planning and Zoning Commission relating to the merit and feasibility of the SMID. And so that's a, that's one of the findings that the Planning and Zoning Commission would need to make. And I think in this case, we have five years of history that shows that merit and feasibility. It was a finding that was made the last time that this came to the commission. So I do think that the, again, that that history will help in that finding. And just one last thing, the $2.75 per $1,000 of taxable valuation is the same, the same tax that was imposed initially. So there's nothing changing, other than the renewal term and these two properties that are coming in voluntarily. So I just wanted to point those things out because it is just an unusual process. So if there are any questions on that, I'm happy to answer.
No, I appreciate the additional insight. One of the things I noted in the write-out and said there are also some of the highest percentages as far as participation and approval at the 52% ever seen in any, what do you call it? SMID?
SMID.
SMID petition in Iowa's history. So I'd say you had a boy and had a people for that. That's a great accomplishment. It's not too many places where you see somebody that says, "Tax me more."
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and I think the proof is in the pudding, right? Where they're physically coming to me, they know that I'm an advocate for them. And, you know, we've done it for four years and getting the petition signed again at 52%, which represents 71% of the value. That's a big number, right?
Yeah.
And so that shows that we are creating value, and we want to continue what we're doing down here.
It's better when they can touch it and feel it and see it.
That's right.
Yeah, you bet.
Yep.
I appreciate everything you do.
Yep, and we, just one more point. We did have the conversation with Lord's and Mr. Wagner before we even realigned the district, right? So we wanted to make sure they were in before we went forward and redrew our lines and stuff. So we didn't want to come in with an iron fist and say, "Hey, you're a part of it, whether you like it or not." The way, that's the, what I'm trying to create down here is we are a family, a downtown family, and we want to communicate and collaborate and do what we can to make downtown Bettendorf all it can be.
Yeah, great, appreciate that.
I think the events you guys have put together have been excellent.
Yeah, we had, Be Downtown is slowly gathering some steam. We've been up against it weather-wise the last three years. The first two years there, it was in the 90s, and then we had a little bit of rain this year. But a free, family, fun event. Again, it's about getting people's eyes on what we're building down here, letting them know that downtown Bettendorf is alive, and we're continuing our, of making a great place where people want to live, work, and play.
Yeah, awesome.
I really think you're excelling at that. Because when I moved here, I don't know, 12, 13 years ago, I would have said, "What downtown Bettendorf? Bettendorf has a downtown?" I mean, and now it's very evident where to go and what you guys have to offer down there, so.
Well, a lot of people will say that's because of me, but it's not just because of me, right?
Because of the team that you've created.
Right.
Absolutely.
And it also has to do with infrastructure, right? The bridge hindered economic development, but now the bridge is economic development.
Right.
Yeah, great. So from a procedural standpoint, do you need an acknowledgement? Or is it going to be part of the motion regarding the merits and feasibility?
That would be part of the motion after you hold the public hearing. And then the motion, that would be part of the motion.
Okay.
If it's helpful, Mr. Chairman, in our recommendation, I kind of used the wording that I think the statute would require, which I got from Chris. And so the recommendation here does incorporate, I think, the idea of the finding and the demonstrated, you know, success, and that we're recommending the approval of the SMID for five-year term and the expanded geographic scope of the district. So if you would like to use that as a guide as you make your motion, that would be available to this body.
I think Scott's going to be prepared to do that when we get there, so, yeah. All right, appreciate that. All right, is there anything else right now? I would ask Lisa, do we have proof of publication for case 24-041?
Yes, we do.
Thank you for doing that. I will open the public hearing of case 24041 and ask, is there any public comment? Any of those in the audience that would have comments or feedback relative to this case? Last call. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing for case 24-041 and come back to the commission for any discussion and/or questions. All right, then. I think we're in order for a...
We're ready?
Yes, we're ready. If you're ready, we're ready.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend the following: renewal of the SMID for a five-year renewal term, the expanded geographic scope of the district, a specific finding that the SMID has merit and is feasible, and that such merit and feasibility has been demonstrated through the initial term of the SMID.
All right, that's your motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, recommend for approval, case 24-0. Is this a recommended or is this a definitive for us? It's still recommended, yeah. Recommend for approval, case 24-041, subject to Scott's motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, same sign. Oh, we got it, sorry, roll call motion. Roll call, Lisa, sorry.
Cochrane?
Yes.
Ormsby?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Wenland?
Yes. Got too excited there. Okay, all right. Case 24-041 is recommended for approval.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
All right, tell us who we have here.
My name is Jacob Nepp. I'm a student at Iowa State, and I am doing an internship this summer with the Community Development Department. I'm a political science and history double major, and I'm getting a minor in GIS, which has been very helpful for making maps and different types of figures and stuff that are very helpful.
Great, great. Yeah, I had the opportunity...
I can give a more proper introduction.
Yeah, yeah, let's tell everything about him we know, so.
We're just really lucky to have, really kind of developed a partnership with Iowa State University. It's our second Iowa State University intern, the first one to present in front of this body. Jacob's really talented. He has some special skills in GIS and writing that he's put to work for us. So while it's an educational experience for him, he's also delivering a lot of value to the city. And so we wanted to give him the opportunity to have this experience. Taylor's going to help guide him through it. I would ask for your kindness and understanding, but I think you're going to be impressed with his analysis and his thoughtfulness.
Yeah, no, appreciate it and welcome. Glad you're in the field and contributing. I had the opportunity to meet you earlier today, and you kind of ran through some of the presentations. So welcome to have you, and please proceed.
Thank you, appreciate it. So this is case 24-042 for Lot 1 of FG Holdings Fourth Edition. It's a site development plan. So applicant Tom Mappin of Power Wash has proposed a site development plan to construct a car wash located on Lot 1 of FG 80 Holdings Fourth Edition. It is proposed to construct one car wash and associated parking lot that is 8,236 square feet. It is defined by Bettendorf City Code as an automotive service, which is approved use. So for the future land use, it is currently listed as CC or community commercial, and the current zoning ordinance is C3 or business district. And a car wash is considered permitted use within the C3 district. The development is located on Lot 1 of FG 80 Holdings Fourth Edition. A stormwater detention for the site is provided in off-site regional ponds. The car wash contains six wash bays and one mechanical room. They include automatic wash, manual wash, and one RV wash. There are a total of five stacking spaces provided for each bay. There is one dumpster enclosed on the northeast corner of the lot, and off-street parking is provided on the west of the building. There's access on Competition Drive via easements with Lot 2 located north of the development. For the landscape plan, there are a proposed, the proposed development contains a total of three tree factors. It also proposes an addition of shrubs, ornamental grass, and perennials for aesthetic purposes. The proposed landscape is compliant with city landscape ordinances. And landscaping also provides screening for development located west of the car wash. So this is a rendering of the bays facing west. It also shows the stacking spaces for where cars can park before going in through the car wash. This is another 3D rendering facing north, the exit from the wash bays, parking and access via Competition Drive. This is a top-down layout view of the wash bays and also the mechanical room. The RV wash has an increased height of 14 feet.
Just as a refresher, this is the, let's turn that off. FG 80, the whole development layout is shown here. So Lot 2 is a approved development located just north of this car wash. And then we have the car wash, which is Lot 1. Just west is the hotel under construction across from Competition Drive, so you can kind of see the layout there. Lot 2, FG 80 Holdings, is a approved commercial building with two drive-throughs. There are access easements, so there'll be drive lanes on the west and east side of that commercial building. The main access, I would reiterate, is off of Competition Drive located down here. To the west, we have the hotel, shown here. Competition Drive does separate from that car wash, and there's that screening that Jacob mentioned. We will note that the east side of the hotel will be facing this car wash. That east side contains stairwell and no rooms. So staff contends this will have minimal impact on that development in its current configuration.
And you have a 70-foot wide right of way between...
And Competition Drive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Staff recommends approval of case number 24-042, site development plan for Lot 1, FG 80 Holdings Fourth Edition, with the following condition: Car wash is not to be used by semi-trucks or tractor trailers.
You take any questions?
All right, thank you, Jake, appreciate it. Well done. Mark, anything to add?
I would just say that that condition really is also present in the zoning, because if it becomes a truck wash, then it's a different use. Actually, it would be considered more escaping the...
A travel center.
Yeah, travel center, and that would not be allowed in that zoning district, so that's the...
How do we effectively manage that? Or how does the owner effectively manage?
It'd be pretty hard for tractor trailers, but, you know, just getting in and out would not be attractive.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if somebody forces themselves in there.
Some kind of...
As far as advertising yourself and promoting it, it's what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, would it have signage, no trucks, or RVs only, or something like that?
That could be an option, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, questions and comments from the commission regarding this case?
Are there any acoustic concerns for any of the neighbors?
So the proposed wash has automatic, manual, and that RV wash. This is very similar, the setup is very similar to a car wash on Devil's Glen, east side of Devil's Glen Road, just north of the Snatch Meets our building. There are dryers, I believe, within that, hose dryers, not something, not to our knowledge, anything as loud as maybe at the, what you'd see at the gas stations. Given the separation with the off-street parking on the site, the screening, the separation of Competition Drive, and the orientation of that hotel, set the stairwell end of the hallway, and they have mechanicals on that side of the building, staff contends that should not be, minimal impact with those.
Sure, thanks.
Good. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Yes, sir. Please.
John Marner with MMS Consultants, representing the applicant. I'd just add, come in, Mr. Nepp. Good job on the application. I'm available for any questions, if you have any. I will add, the north access, you can see there, we've coordinated with that property developer to the north to provide a two-way access, again, to provide circulation through the site. And we also work to make sure that the cars exiting the car wash have a full stacking space before they're pulling into that shared access drive aisle that runs on the west side of the building.
Yeah, just a question we had about restricting the trucks. Do you do that with signage? I mean, looking at the islands and things that are out there, it looks very truck-unfriendly. So is it signage, or how do you manage that from a practical standpoint?
You have no intent or to provide services to any of those? You certainly come up?
Yeah. Tom Mappin, we don't have any plans to wash trucks there. We will, I don't think they can get in there, but as anything, they'll prove me wrong at some point. But yes, it'll be something to say, "No, no semis" or to that. More, it's more for oversized, like RVs, trailers, things like that. And these bays are longer than our ones that we currently have on Devil's Glen. So they'll be more friendly to people that want to wash in the winter, that want to pull, you know, a trailer in behind it, things like that.
Okay.
So we don't want it on our concrete anyways with heavy semis and that kind of thing.
Sure, all right, thank you, appreciate it.
I would note that any additional signage, like directional signage or no semi-truck signage, would not go against the total allowed signage for the site as far as the on-premise business signage.
Okay, great, appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter?
Do you propose any vacuum stations, or is it just wash?
There are vacuum stations at the west edge of the property as well, and that's the other intent for some of that screening and the landscaping aesthetically.
Yeah, got it.
The grasses and some of those things is to provide screening for that as well.
Okay. Anyone else? No? All right, I'll come back to the commission on case 24042.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number 24-042. Subject to any staff recommendations.
Second.
All right, great, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 24-042, site development plan, Lot 1 FG 80 Holdings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, same sign. Okay, thank you. 24-042 is recommended for approval.
Next case on the agenda is case 24-045, site development plan for 5515 Valley Drive. A little background on this case, the applicant is Chris Jones. Request is to, the development proposes demolishing an existing detached garage and constructing a 40-by-80-foot light industrial building consisting of two contractor suites. Currently, the site contains a live-work dwelling in a house and detached garage. Adjacent developments include Storage Rentals of America, and then to the north, we have a rented house, farmhouse with farmland, and a leased barn with storage in it. And this is located just at the intersection of Belmont and Valley Drive, a industrial corridor to the south and the east, and then we have some residential in Riverdale to the west, and then ag land to the north. Future land use and zoning for this, future land use map designates this area as industrial. The current zoning is C3 general business. The existing house on the property is rented and used as a business for the applicant's rental company, thus constituting a live-work dwelling that is a permitted use in the C3 district. The second part, the proposed development, includes a light industrial pole barn, or contractor condos, as we commonly call them, and that's also a permitted use in the C3 district. So two important uses, use determinations there for the zoning. Site plan shows a 40-by-80 pole barn with two 16-by-14-foot garage doors and person doors. The existing detached garage will be removed and replaced with a concrete pavement. Dedicated electrical and gas utilities will be run from Valley Drive, separate from the house. And a parking pad is also shown for the existing tenant of that dwelling located near the house patio. Total of four off-street parking spaces are provided for the light industrial building. Development does not meet the threshold for requiring onsite stormwater detention due to, under the impervious surface area threshold. No additional landscaping is proposed. Really, this is just a development on the rear of the property. The front of the property has, currently has electrical easements from overhead electrical lines, so no additional landscaping is being proposed. And the applicant has stated the existing refuse collection will be utilized, so that's trash cans. But staff is recommending a private dumpster if the future tenants are either overfilling or if that's not conducive to the future tenants' uses. So trash cans are allowed, but if that becomes a problem or an issue from our public works, we will enforce, require them to have a private dumpster for that light industrial use.
And they would need to roll those out to the street for normal pickup day? We don't drive down that, the Lexus?
Correct, that's the drive, yeah. Staff recommendation, staff contends the proposed development meets site development plan standards and code requirements, and recommends approval of case 2445 with the following condition, that if it becomes an issue, that private dumpster collection be utilized based on those future tenants' uses, basically producing increased refuse. I can take any questions.
All right, thank you, Taylor, appreciate it. Mark, anything additional from your perspective? No? All right, questions and comments regarding 24045 from the commission, please? I thought in there somewhere I saw some reference, it's going to be open. Is the intent to have two users in that building?
That is correct, that's two doors. So there would be a split of that building. The intent is to, the owner to occupy one and then lease out the other, I believe.
And it's, maybe it's a building department kind of question, but would that have a firewall in between separating it and all that?
Yep, that is shown on the building, I should call it the concept plan.
Maybe that's where I saw it.
But that would be reviewed at the building permit stage, correct? Yep.
Okay, others with the commission with questions? No? Anyone in the audience with regard to this case? No? All right, back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 24-045, subject to staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
My second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 24-045, site development plan at 5515 Valley Drive. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Case 24-045 is recommended for approval, which will take us to 23-091.
Mr. Chairman, we have case 23-091, which is Beck subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, we have case 23-091, which is Beck Subdivision. It's located north of Belmont Road and Pleasant Ridge Court. Right here is Belmont Road, Pleasant Ridge Court right here. Outlined area is proposed as a two-lot subdivision with one outlot. See, the land use surrounding is primarily urban low intensity with parks and open space where the cemetery is located right here. And that facilitates A2 rural residence zoning. And that zoning predominates primarily to the west and to the south of the proposed subdivision. Everything else is A1 agricultural urban reserve district. Single-family housing is permitted, and that is essentially what's being accommodated on this plat. You do have a house here, you do have this lot available, potentially if the FEMA requirements were met for fill. This lot two is almost all totally inundated with floodplain here, and then this area here is floodway, which is non-buildable. At 7.493 acres for lot two, lot one is 1.456 acres, and that contains a residence. We also have an outlot A right here, which is meant potentially for future conveyance to the owner right there of lot one. Their utility connections have primarily come to this site already from Belmont, and then coming up here against, up here with Pleasant Ridge Court, and then we have this additional recognition now, our sanitary sewer being here with the 30-foot wide sanitary sewer easement being incorporated into the design of lot two. Only access is primarily from Belmont Road to Pleasant Ridge Drive, and then Pleasant Ridge Court. And then there is an access easement here, 30 feet in width, connecting lots one and two, and this lot, this parcel here, to Pleasant Ridge Court. There primarily is no, there are no sidewalks within the subdivision, there aren't any anticipated. Structures that were built here were done prior to the city incorporating this area back in the mid 1960s. So, the subdivision standards do not apply to what is existing, essentially divvying up the ownership of where the existing structures are. There are no stormwater detention basins required on this site. And then the panel, as I mentioned before, the FEMA panel, this was updated this year, I mean, it should say, yeah, this year. Owner's lot one, as part of the agreement, staff recommends approval, is comprehensive plan goal D, provide housing options and reinvesting in existing neighborhoods. Staff would recommend approval, and also add the conditions that the owners of lot one shall provide caretaking agreement for outlot A to be presented with the plating documents for the recording of the plat, and then also that the access easement, the 30-foot wide access easement, also label the recorded document number, or that it shows the bearing and distance that was not shown on the plat. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Mark, anything to add from your perspective?
I think we just, we're kind of sidebaring here because we're, want to make a clarification. Yep, Greg, can you go back and maybe try to zoom into that, outlot A?
Yeah, good, I got a question on that too, so.
Let's see, okay.
Just want to make sure we presented this correctly, and I'm not, I don't, I don't know that you presented it incorrectly, but I want to clarify. So, outlot A, as I read the note on this plat, says is held for potential future conveyance to, thank you, lot one of the adjoining subdivision, if you will, not, not the lot one to the north. Does that make sense?
Oh, okay, yeah. This one right here.
Yes, sir.
Yep, yep.
That makes a lot more sense.
Okay, I was wondering.
That's like you're really far.
Yeah, I dropped that.
Yeah, and so I'm like, wait a second, did we say that right? So, that would be potentially future conveyance, it's kind of just parceled off so that if they do want to sell to that lot, it's easy to do.
There you go.
Kind of square off the lot back there in the future, potentially?
Kind of doing some survey work at the same time as getting the plat done, is kind of how I look at it. So, they can have future conveyance.
That helps.
Yes.
Yep. Because I saw the lot one up there, and the lot one down there, thought it was the other one, yep, okay, good. Questions and comments from the commission? Is lot two, is there any future intent to develop on lot two?
I think we would defer to the owner to answer that question.
Mr. Beck?
Hi, I'm Jeff Beck, I'm Tim Beck's son. Tim owns the whole property, and I'm the child who's going to be purchasing, or the transition of ownership will go to my family for the, where the buildings are. There is no specific plans to develop any of the lots in the floodplain, though the the southeast corner, I suppose it is, yep, there, there's a little area there that could be filled in and have a house above the floodplain that would abut back with the cemetery. So, my dad has mused about that, but there's no plans in process at this point.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
You bet.
Anyone else, questions regarding this matter? Anything else you wanted to add, or anyone else in the audience with regard to this case? Oh, all right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 23-091, subject to staff approval.
I have a second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-091, final plat Beck subdivision. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. 23-091 is recommended for approval, which would take us to 24-035.
Mr. Chairman, this is a Site Development Plan for 1740 State Street, and essentially, you're looking at a request to take this existing structure and add on to it in this area right here. You see almost the entirety of the area under the same designation of urban high-intensity land use, and it's surrounded, this parcel is by the same land use. It facilitates C3 general business district zoning, and it also meets with comprehensive plan goal C to attract and retain business and industry. Surrounding zoning is broken down between C2 and C3. C3 area is adjoining to the west, and then you have the C2 area to the north, to the east, and to the south. C3 general business district does permit commercial recreation, which is what is being asked for here with the golf simulator. The bar, which requires a special use permit, and outdoor alcohol service as well, are permitted as long as those special use permits are obtained, and they were by the procedure going to the Board of Adjustment. This is the lot right here, essentially, when you have State Street, you're looking down here, and there's 18th Street. This is 18th Street, and this is the means of access to get to the parking that will be provided for customers. Employee parking will be here, given the line of site issues for backing in and out. Want to encourage this area also, that upon entry, that the 18th Street exit here might be used, given the amount of traffic and the speed of the traffic coming here. You also have a parking lane out here. The 512-square foot addition is being placed on this portion of the building. The size of that addition does not meet our requirements, as we looked at this in development review. It does not fall within the guise of the downtown master plan overlay district standards for review because of the small nature of the square footage being added. The structure was a gas station before, repair shop, or autos, and the last use was actually by the owner that is proposing the changes here tonight, was a home improvement contractor business. And this will give you an idea of how the elevations look, and then the interior, the addition of a restroom area here, and there's an outdoor patio, and then there's the interior for the golf simulator and bar. The hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 2:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., and on Saturdays and Sundays, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. And then the special permits were issued at the Board of Adjustment meeting this past month. Access and thoroughfare, essentially a means of access coming here and going into the drive as it exists. Primarily, again, we want to encourage this area, we want it posted that this is employee parking, means of egress on 18th, we don't want to encourage people coming in this direction. And then from 18th to get into the area proper with the parking here for the customers. Utilities are pretty much what they are within the structure, and it was not easy discovering these. We do have electrical that, or I should say, gas that's running here, and then the electrical will be stubbed in here in this direction. And what we have is existing within the structure, given its age. Pedestrian access, you pretty much have sidewalk access around the area, these are your atypical four-feet-wide sidewalks. And what's also being proposed for this, and the city council will not see this until the special location plan, has been approved by the Board of Adjustment. Right now, we're seeing 36 parking spaces being required for this area right here. Special location plan is going to be required. We can see within 300 feet, the convention center, 1777 State Street, City Hall, 1609 State, and then up here, another public area, 1730 Grant Street, which facilitate the use of these sites for public parking, which can be shared with this business. Also, a request has been placed under provisions in the ordinance 1113-5F to reduce by one half in this district, the parking requirements from 36 to 18 spaces. Landscaping was met, there are eight tree factors being planted in this area, and there were seven that were required overall, and all lighting shall be forced to be downcast on the parcel itself and follow the overlay district regulations, as well as our lighting regulations. Special use permits, again, as I had mentioned, had already been acquired for the outdoor service for alcohol, and then the bar in the interior. But another aspect of this is the sign placement, and the sign on the building here and here will require the body to review this. There isn't much in the way of this sign being a difficult proposition. The permitted signs within the district are wall signs, which these are, monument signs, ground signs, and awning signs. The wall signs shall be limited in size by the regulations of the underlying district, which in this case, we just go to the sign ordinance, and these are already within those parameters. If there's any monument-based sign contemplated, they shall have to have a masonry base. Staffing reviewing this proposal feels that it meets comprehensive plan goal C to attract and retain business and industry. We would just ask in the future that any lease change or use that is being proposed for this site be brought to the city staff first to determine whether or not the use or special use might be permitted within that particular structure, and also, we want to evaluate the parking requirements. We don't want any trees being planted within easement areas. Special use permits will be required to be, well, will be activated upon city council approval of the site plan. Special location plan will be required to be approved by the Board of Adjustment, and then that the parking along the south side of the building be posted as employee-only parking. Staff in these regards supports the petitioner's request for approval. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank, sorry, okay, thank you, Greg, appreciate it. Mark, anything to add?
Yeah, I just want to jump in on the parking and clarify that a little bit, so you may remember this, because I think it was within a couple years, maybe three years ago, we brought an ordinance to you for your recommendation for approval. In our downtown, we want to create density, and so we have a provision that allows us, allows applicants to request a 50% reduction in parking in the downtown overlay district. The applicant's doing that, and we support that. And so, the 36 number would be if we're parked anywhere but downtown, because you're downtown, you can request for 50% reduction, so 36 becomes 18. He's got 13 on site. We have the ability to take this case back to the Board of Adjustment, and by special location plan, it's a term of art used in our code, request parking off-site, usually after you build a business, but if you've got a parking business on your own site, but we're going to request parking be approved off-site within 300 feet as code allows, and there are multiple spots that we could achieve that, including the public parking lot at, tell me the address, 18th at Riverside, right next to Riverside Barn Restaurant, the City Hall parking lot where we're at today, and also the Waterfront Convention Center. So, we think we'll be able to find easily five spots available there. We encourage people to come to our downtown, park in one place, and walk around, so that's why we have the parking reduction, instead of making these very big parking lots that heat up our downtown. So, just to clarify the parking, there's probably one step left after this, as far as a preapproval before it goes to council, and that's to go get that parking approved by Board of Adjustment. The reason we didn't do that, when we took it to Board Adjustment for the bar and for the patio with alcohol service, is because at that time, they were still kind of tweaking the site plan, and they thought, maybe we could make the patio small enough, or the occupancy small enough in the building, and we wouldn't even need to go that step. That didn't work out, and I think this is honestly a better plan. You want that patio to be functional, not so small, no one wants to use it, so really the, a long-winded answer, but the parking, I think, will be fine. We do have one more step after this at the Board of Adjustment to get a special location plan for parking approved for five spots nearby.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. So, just a question on that off-site parking, is it? It's okay so long, or how am I going to say, it's acceptable so long as there's available spaces, it doesn't have to be under any kind of particular leasing or use agreement or anything like that?
That could be a component, but because we have public parking in our downtown, because as a city, we've built that into our downtown, the 300-feet rule falls within.
Okay.
Parking lots.
That's a rule.
Yeah, I know, if he had an easement with a neighbor, or a lease agreement with a neighbor, that would be fine too, but it just so happens that we're happy to have them park at this city parking lots, because that's why they're there.
Sure.
We would love for them to park, you know, go hit a few shots, and then visit other downtown businesses and make Brian Jancy happy.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Other questions from the commission? Greg, I had one. Can you put back up the recommendation that you had, it's a little different than what I had in the print? Number one, the owner of the multi-tenant retail structure, I didn't, I wasn't catching.
Yeah, I mean, it should be just the structure itself.
Not multi-tenant.
But if, yeah, we.
Clarify the recommendations.
Multi-use, actually.
Are written in the staff report, that's the recommendations or conditions, so whatever those are on the staff report, I can read those off to you.
But it's not going to be multi-tenant?
Uh, but multi-use, it should have read.
Multi-use.
Because it is a golf simulator, and it is a bar.
Gotcha, okay. Anyone else?
Just wanted, for the record, I want to read this, if you would, Chairman. Our, the staff recommended conditions are, no planning of tree factors and easements, approval by Board of Adjustment of special location plan for parking, part of the Site Development Plan to City Council, and that signage being installed to indicate that the use of the parking space on the south side of the building is for employees only. We just want to not have a lot of in and out right there on that front, and so those three are the correct three. I think there may have been a mistake in this presentation on the slides.
Okay, yeah, because I looked at that one, and I had three, those three, in the printed presentation, and then I was looking at this and that. One is a new one, and the other three were on there, so. No planning, approval by Board of Adjustment, signage. Okay, anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope? All right, we'll come back to the commission. I will say, when I drove by tonight, over there, there were a ton of cars all around there, so parking could be a challenge, but I think this whole solution, and I don't know if there's a way to better promote, to make the public aware of the public spaces.
I would, I would just say at night, they're aware.
Are they?
Yeah.
And I would also say.
I don't hang down long enough to know, so.
I think we're working on something on that.
Okay.
I have heard from a communications team that we're working on something about that, I don't want to.
Okay.
Want to get out ahead of myself.
And we currently have a couple of things on our website promoting some of our public parking in our downtown. Some of them are temporary, actually, we, you'll note the parking for the bridge, pedestrian bridge, that's part of it, and then, of course, the more permanent, west of the bridges and Riverside Parking, City Hall, Waterfront. permanent west of the bridges and Riverside Parking, City Hall, waterfront, and any more that are to be added in the future. So we'll keep, maybe re-promote that.
Yeah, good, good. All right. Come back to the commission on this one.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 24-035, subject to the staff recommendations as written in the report.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 24-035, Site Development Plan for 1740 State Street. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Thank you. 24-035 is recommended for approval, which would take us then to Mr. Hunt and a commission update.
Yeah, just happy to report that we had our first reading, public hearing, first reading of the conference of plan, the downtown master plan, and the, I'm going to call it the crosswalk ordinance from our new future land map to our old zoning code. First reading was approved unanimously. We don't expect any problem going forward. And roll up your sleeves, and then we're going to start working on the zoning ordinance. And the hits keep on coming.
Yeah, yeah, good, good.
But thank you for all your efforts on that. And that was very well received by council. So thank you very much.
Good. And staff as well. Awesome job on it. It's a, as you noted, a big, heavy book with a lot of information in it. So appreciate that. All right. If there's nothing else for the good of the order, we're adjourned. Thank you.